Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm calling the planning board meeting to order of November 7th, 2022 at 7:21 PM. 1.1, roll call, vote please.
Carol Hopps is present.
Robert Theryn, present.
Laura Schifrin, present. I'd like to call for the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all to our veterans and our people who are serving now. This meeting is being recorded and I want to apologize ahead of time for our technical difficulties this evening. 1.4, Chairman's additions, deletions unforeseen prior to 48 hours of this meeting. We did discover that our September 12th minutes were not yet approved and they have been given to the board. I'd like to add that under 1.6. 1.5, review of volunteer response forms received for planning board vacancy. Beth, have we gotten any? Okay, there are none. 1.6, approval of the planning minutes of September 12th, 2022 and October 24th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 12th September and October 24th, 2022.
And is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Could you re-point your iPhone app yourself? We're getting a shot of the scene.
Oh. Sorry about that. I usually multi-text very well, but this is not working. Sorry about that. So I've called for a vote on the minutes of September 12th and October 24th, 2022.
Carol Hopps is yes.
Robert Theryn here.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Those are approved. Next on the agenda, and we have a few minutes before 7:30 public hearing. What can we do quickly? Can we go to the correspondence and try to get that out of the way? Memo from Board of Selectmen regarding 2022 special town meeting.
The warrant opens and closes on the 11th. I'm sorry, because I usually have all this electronic printed out. But the warrant will open and close on November 11th. So we have one warrant article ready to go and be submitted. And the second one is the site plan review amendment.
Okay.
So I can put that into warrant format, if you will, and give those both to Eric Slater, if you guys would like to.
I think so. We'd like to have the place held for them?
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
And, okay. 4.2, memo from Selectmen's office regarding license renewals. License renewals?
Yes, those were also in the folder. So I'll review those administratively. And if there are any outstanding conditions or anything that's not for, yeah, that the planning board is outstanding on those businesses, I will know that I have some, we didn't say.
Okay. All right, so those license renewals are for businesses in town, which they may be up. I know I renewed mine, I think.
So when they renew them, those will all be outstanding, like if there are any outstanding orders or conditions during.
Oh, okay. Those are not business renewals, then?
Alcohol license and we fix our.
Okay. Stormwater permit updates, inspection reports or other related correspondence under 4.3.
On Wednesday, there's a site walk. Planning board members were invited to the camp farm.
Oh, yeah.
Space preservation development requesting certificate of completion, permission on water management permit. So that's going on Wednesday at 11:00 in North End Grove.
Okay.
And I send out information to the board.
I have. I didn't bring my calendar with me, but I will get back to you if I can make that or not.
There's probably staff members going.
Oh, good.
The conservation agent, myself.
Oh, good. Okay. I've been a little stretched slightly. 4.4, notices from Townsend, other towns. Carol, did you happen to see those in the portal? Okay. Well, before we, so I'm going to leave correspondence now. So we've left off at 4.4 in that. And just before the public hearing, I can't see my time on this. I would like to read the statement regarding Zoom. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required to by law. Members of the public with interest in a specific agenda item should make plans for in-person attendance. This isn't as easy as it looks, you know? Okay, we still have a couple of minutes. Is there anything under the work session that you think will go quickly? Oh, I know. 4.5, Safe Roots to School Program. Carol, is there any update on 4.5?
I'm actually having a meeting Wednesday. The new coordinator in MEBR from the recreation department.
Okay.
Three was going to be on Wednesday.
Okay. And under 4.6, invitation to a joint meeting with Townsend Housing Authority, Zoning Board of Appeals, Townsend Affordable Housing Trust scheduled for November 14th at 7:00 PM.
Sorry to interrupt. Beth, when you say, please unmute.
Thank you, Hartley. So. I think we're all through with four. Number four is completed. Number four is completed. All of four is completed.
All of it?
All of number four. So 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5 and 4.6 have been read into the record. I don't see anything quick under work sessions, so I am going to pass that and, okay. Right, it looks like it's 7:31. So. It is hot in here. I'd like to call the public meeting, public hearing to order. Before I do that, at 7:31 PM, I have a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hopps is present.
Robert Theryn, present.
Laura Schifrin, present. I won't read the whole notice of continuation of the public hearing since it's all been read before. However, it was received October 5th, 2022 at the Town Clerk's Office. I will now reconvene the public hearing for 22 Main Street Veterinary Hospital Site Plan Review Special Permit. There's a public hearing sheet here if those who are in attendance would sign in. And now I would ask Sally, do you want to come over and give any additional information? Want to introduce yourself and give your address?
Pardon?
Do you want to introduce yourself, please, and give your address?
My name is Sally Thurber, 29 Main Street Townsend, and I'm here about 22 Main Street.
Okay. And let's see. We opened the public hearing on August 22nd and continued that to October 3rd. The planning board requested documentation from you at that time. And you're given approximately six or seven weeks to get that done at that time. You emailed in that you did not have the documentation. So we extended or continued the public hearing to tonight.
Yes, so right now, after that meeting, I contacted an architect who said she would do the site plan. No problem. And I met with her in September, gave her all the documents. And we communicated a couple of times after that. She said she was going to do a topographical site plan. And then I didn't hear from her for a few weeks. Tried to contact her by email, phone, text. And she just dropped off the piece of the earth, so I don't know where she is. At that point, which was a couple of weeks ago, I went online to find somebody who could do those kind of plans. And I talked to somebody in another country who does that kind of thing. Who sent me all kinds of examples of his plans. He had lots of product reviews. He's a civil engineer. And he said it would be easy. It doesn't take very long to do. So I sent him all the documents and never heard anything and he doesn't respond to any of mine.
Laurie, could you please unmute? Could you please unmute?
Sorry about that. This isn't easy. Normally it doesn't happen like this, but I have to hold the phone and conduct all of this. Okay, April 4th, May 10th. Yeah, we're just, we're having a difficult time tonight. And I just read a statement about that before you walked in. So, May 10th, May 31st, June 8th, lengthy letters from the building inspector regarding your operation. And you came in after the June 8th and applied. Then we began the public hearing August 22nd. In other meetings that we held, we got reports from the building inspector and land use coordinator in reference to the phone calls that they've made to you and help that they were giving you in trying to get this accomplished. It would seem that that was a lot of time and you've been able to operate that whole time.
So your question is why I haven't gotten an engineered site plan?
My question is, why didn't you start it before the public hearing? You were given all the direction in the process back in April. And now you're going to be looking for another continuation, but you're going to continue to do your business without a permit, without licensing.
I don't know what to tell you. I've been following all the rules, all the codes.
I, no, I think that's part of the problem. You haven't been following all the rules and all the codes. They've been given to you since last April. And nothing really started as far as you contacting people, as far as we were told by you since that time or since we asked in August. I mean, we don't know who you contacted. We don't have any documentation received from anyone.
Who did I not contact?
Robert?
Miss Thurber. Architects are not qualified. Civil engineer that does survey, do site design. Those people have to be licensed in Massachusetts, be certified in Massachusetts to do these. So unfortunately, you've gone to other places and they didn't perform. But even if they had, they standard that whatever they need. So I caution you now not to pursue those things anymore. There are plenty of local surveyors that do civil engineering, sanitation engineering, can do the toe work. My concern at the last presentation that you had with the site plan that you did have was based on what you put in your application did not appear that you even had enough distance from the building to the property lines for the 24-foot driveway that you were proposing. So, and that submission was a document that you had prepared. And we just can't accept that, except you was a qualified person to do that. So I don't know how to proceed from here, but I do believe this board made it very specific about what's needed. And it's needed by any applicant in the same position as you. And so this board's in an awkward situation because you're operating in an existing non-conforming and you're operating in a residential building that is going to be, has to be changed to a commercial use. And so there are a lot of things involved here, including building codes, which we heard from the building department. So this, and the building department will deal with, you know, codes and stuff required for that. But, so the planning board can't move forward here unless we have an adequate comprehensive application. And I think all the members agree with that. And so we have nothing we can offer you right now. Although maybe another extension, but I'm not sure the board is willing to do that.
Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you, Laurie, there. Rest of the board as well. I can appreciate everything that's been said from the perspective of the town people. The background, for those that don't know, I've been in the site development business for 35 years. The building inspector called me back in the spring. They were asking if I'd be willing to guide Dr. Thurber for some of those. And so I agreed and put my license out to give guidance on that and then stepped away. And then I had a similar conversation with water health, used my license and did the install. We were accepting upgrade, repair on the tank. I had very limited conversation with the day. I did talk to the doctor, loved the challenge that she was having. And I've come to understand since, I don't know, the day. So I can appreciate tolerating just the extensions. Now, I'm not a very good vet. And I think it's safe to say that the vet is probably not a very good site developer. No disparaging intent. But I think that I did say to her today that I would try to give her guidance, try to get the right civil engineer and try to be able to guide her in the direction to have the appropriate drawings done with existing conditions, proposed conditions, and hopefully overlay of setbacks and other requirements. And I believe, and I spent limited time, it's an OCD, it must be the outline commercial district. Is that correct? It's in between.
Yeah.
So the only thing I can offer to the board is a little bit of knowledge, which I've done with the building inspector and the damage report. Is to try to guide the doctor who's told us to be a veterinarian. A lot of careers, you'll do that. I don't know the histories. I don't really want to know the history. But if it's any consolation or if it gives any assistance to say, see what you can come up with in what period of time, I'm happy to help only because I like to see business, the betterment of the community and people in it survive and thrive. But I don't know what type of time you're looking in. My own qualifier is that civil engineer is right now. And I have a couple that I work with are extremely busy. I don't call one today and say, roughly, do we want to come over and get this done tomorrow? So only assurance that I can give you is my word. We have that conversation with Dr. Thurber about this. But from our earlier conversation today, I got a very clear impression that she'd like some guidance on what to do. If you're a regular architect, you don't do it. A draughtsman doesn't do it. It has to be civil engineering. Do we require a B E stamp?
Well, the submission documents, some of these companies have offered multi-disciplines. There is one in Womburg, if you want to do some Google search, who does everything that would be required. But what happens to, when a plan is submitted, we look at the topography, change of the topography. We have to look at handicap access. The fire department has to review it. The building department has to review it. The water and health department, they all put in a comment on, on the drawings or whatever's being submitted by the applicant. So a lot of things come into conversation in a public hearing like this. So parking itself has its own standards and requirements, that's the net. I know just from what was presented before, there was a very big question about that parking that was described, in reality, could occur. And then obviously I saw there was no handicap parking and that was an identified idea. But other topics comes in like dumpsters and, you know, visualization from the highway and curb cuts and site drainage and then the septic. So it is a very comprehensive document. And, and I do understand that the people that provide these services have really they're way behind schedule, they've got a lot of clientele. And unfortunately, that's the situation. And so it's unfortunate she didn't do that in the beginning. She'd probably be further along at this point. So the question at hand that I see is, how does this board handle this now? Because there's a bunch of violations already there. We're not here to handicap or, or to, you know, be against negative, you know, business or anything like that. I think we've tried our best to give her the time that she needs and, and help explain. We understand people have different experience and knowledge and get into different situations and receive. So I think, you know, all along, I think we have tried to assist the best we can. So I don't know. The question now is, are we going to do a continuation? And how we put kind of limitations on that? I would suspect that probably a solution would be to notify the board when you have engaged a qualified person and probably their time protection. So that gives us more information about when we, should we continue or not continue and to address some of these other issues. But again, the other thing that you have to be understand is we have a business going on that's not legal at this point. And the court can't ignore that. The town isn't willing to ignore that. And they've been very tolerant. And so, but now, you know, it's been an extensive amount of time and a lot of people are raising eyebrows.
So I certainly, although I ask guys to tell you that you're not tolerant, I think you've been more than tolerant. And I think to leave it open-ended, it's probably not something I'd be comfortable with it. And it's certainly the final say of what I may suggest is up to Dr. Thurber. But if you put some teeth in it, they said within X amount of days, you have to engage a civil, the appropriate civil engineer to do this type of work. Now, as a site developer, I have done permits for 30 years. I don't enjoy it, but I understand it. I'm just finishing up the pretty substantial project at Brock and others. So I've got a pretty good idea on what's required. As a fire chief, I'd also understand some of those other requirements. So I don't want, I don't want to get sucked into that mud pit of all that might be going on. I'm only here tonight with the site development side to say, if you put X amount of time on this, I will try to guide her to the right civil engineer, the right requirements and try to point out in the drawings or in the report, in your application, what is needed.
Okay. I, you know, I see the situation and we all know what the violations are and what the current circumstances are. In terms of Dr. Thurber, the question that comes out is maybe the maybe it'd be more beneficial for her to seek an alternative location that's already zoned and has all the, all the requirements that are gonna be needed here. And I say that in terms of the expenses she's gonna have to encounter. And the requirements that will be forthcoming to actually execute that project. And, and
What are, what are the requirements we're talking about?
Well, first of all, uh, I, I'm here, I, I, I'm just trying to coach you here of things that you may wanna consider. This engineering is a substantial expense of much. The work, site work that will be required, in my opinion, is gonna be extensive as well. Then you have building improvements and have a residential property that now has to meet a higher standard building code. So I'm just
We've already done quite a bit of work.
Right, and that's unfortunate, but this is a feasibility for you. Do you understand, is this a feasible project? And I'm suggesting you evaluate what kind of costs are ahead on this project. And maybe reconsider finding a property that's already zoned commercially. That already has a lot of the site plan requirements.
Are you saying you can rent someplace? Robert?
Uh, I, I'm, no.
Done that, not gonna happen.
This, this is your decision, okay? It is your decision. I'm just trying to make you aware of what is ahead.
What is ahead?
So Sally?
Okay.
For me, um, what you're doing now is actuarial risk. And if the board will be tolerant enough to grant another extension for whatever period of time it is, you need to be able to put together a comprehensive plan and be able to say, this is why you feel you invested into that property to make it work. That, that's the property. Now, if the board rejects it, then because of that field risk, you'll have to retreat. However, uh, right now, I think your option, from my perspective, is that we need to be able to, you need to be able to, whoever's gonna be on that team, come in and make the, uh, appropriate comprehensive presentation of existing conditions and proposed conditions. And how you see that work. Because in order for you to get that permit, everybody's gotta be on board. So it just sounds like there's to me some, uh, some deficiency that has been addressed.
Well, when I bought this property, I was told because it is commercially zoned, I can move my business in. Who told you that? Uh, Dan Lord, real estate agent. Um, that should have been, the answer should have come from the town. Well, it is currently zoned and zoned for business. It's an overlay. It's an overlay, it was a residential use property.
Manager.
Please.
I'm just gonna move to, uh, Adam Costa, town council. So I wanna offer a little advice to the board because I think, um, I think it's important and maybe some caution as well. I think it's important that we understand, um, the scope of the planning board's review and how that relates to the big picture. Um, I know that this property has a history because I was made aware of that history long before this process of the board planning.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, history is somewhat relevant, maybe, to the proceedings that are underway before the planning board. I think it's fair, for example, for this board to consider the fact, um, that there is a business operating at the site. When it weighs the pros and cons and determines the appropriateness of continuance after continuance after continuance. How many it should grant and for how long those continuances should be. What I would caution the board not to do is to get too involved in questioning the history of violations, the fact that there's an ongoing use of the property that may not be permitted by, by zoning, by virtue of the fact that the applicant doesn't yet have, uh, a site plan special permit. Those things are true, but those things are not within your purview to enforce. If there's a zoning violation on the property, if there's an issue with an ongoing business without a site plan special permit, that's for the zoning enforcement officer to enforce, not for the planning board.
Correct.
And an appeal of that determination would not even go to this board, it would go to the zoning board. Um, same thing with respect to other code requirements, building code requirements, for example, fire code requirements. If this property needs to be completely renovated, needs to be torn down and built from, from scratch. That is a building code issue, that's a fire code issue. The applicant proceeds at the applicant's own risk and takes up those issues with the, the, the building official, not with the, with the planning board.
But it is a change of use. And that's where we come in.
Understand, but I understand that the change of use is what triggers the site plan special permit. And she's here before you seeking a site plan special permit. So she, she's by virtue of having made that application, she's not contesting that she doesn't require that relief from the board. I'm simply trying to focus the board on what it is that you're evaluating, you're evaluating the site plan special permit. Um, so I, I, I work with a lot of different boards and a lot of different communities throughout the state. So I appreciate the advice. And I, I always think it's great when a board can try to have a, an informal practical conversation with an applicant and make an applicant aware, you know, we're asking you for A, B, C, D, E. It's gonna cost you a fair amount of money, please be certain you know what it is you're applying for. Please be certain that you know what it is that you're ultimately seeking to obtain and to develop before you set down that map, because it can be a costly map. But ultimately, it's not the board's call, it's the applicant's call. So I appreciate the remarks made by, by Dr. Thurber and the remarks made, um, uh, by, uh, by, uh,
Mr. Shepherd.
Mr. Shepherd. Um, so, um, so what I, what I think the board needs to consider as it looks forward to those processes, there's no timing on a special permit process under Massachusetts law, and you have none. Once the hearing is open, you can keep that hearing open indefinitely. But in practice, just as it wouldn't be appropriate for a planning board to keep the hearing open indefinitely simply because it wants to, when this case office says you can't do that, when we've received all the information, you've gotta close it and make a decision, it's not fair to the applicant. That's a two-way street. It's also not fair to the board that an applicant makes an application, particularly after the fact, when the operation's underway, and then seeks continuance after continuance. Regardless of what the explanation is, whether it's truthful, not truthful, excuse is not, I'm not gonna judge those, but it's not appropriate to keep it open indefinitely. So there needs to be a balancing of, the board needs the information it needs to make its determination. The applicant has responsibility to provide that. And at some point in the process, the board is free to say, enough is enough, we're gonna deny the application for lack of information. Um, that's not great, it doesn't put the applicant in the best position, doesn't always put the board in the best position. Sometimes litigation ensues, nobody benefits in those circumstances, everybody spends money. But at some point, that, when push comes to shove, that's where the board has it. So I think at this stage, knowing what we know now, I, I, I would, I would concur with what Mr. Shepherd said, which is you, you, I don't know that you wanna leave it open-ended, I wouldn't suggest to the applicant, you know, be in touch with the board when you have a civil engineer and let us know when you're gonna give us a plan. There's already been an application before you for two and a half months. I think it's fair for the, but, but at the same time, you've gotta continue to take the time, certainly. You can't leave it open-ended because the law doesn't allow you to. So I think it's fair to establish a date for continuance if that's what the board sees fit to do, and that's your judgment calling mine. And then once you do it, set four deadlines, you know, if continuance is gonna be six weeks out or eight weeks out, require that, you know, you receive a, 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 a plan stamp by a, uh, by a professional engineer, you know, no later than two weeks before the date of the meeting, which is effectively six weeks from now or whatever the timeframe might be to be deemed appropriate.
So I'm just asking you a question. Would it be worth considering if the applicant withdrew without prejudice and, um, then reapply when she's ready to?
So I, is that an option? So I would tell you this, so, so it's, it's, it's always an option if the board allows it. Once an application's been made and it's been noticed, there is no right to withdraw without prejudice. It always is known to the training board. But I know many boards that in circumstances like these would say, rather than continue it for one, two, three, four, five more months, we'd like you to withdraw, we'll allow you to withdraw without prejudice. And then you can make reapplication within that two-year window because it's a withdrawal without prejudice. This is a unique circumstance because you have, and again, this is where it does, this does play a factor. You have an operation that's underway at the premises, unlawful. So my understanding, and again, I don't wanna go too far down this path. My understanding, because I've been consulting with your, your building official over the course of nine months now, was that, um, he issued a cease and desist order some time ago with a variety of issues needed to be addressed. Many of those issues were addressed. One of the issues that is outstanding, maybe it's the only issue that's outstanding, is the lack of a site plan special permit. And he has not proceeded, and I don't wanna speak for him, but my understanding is that he has not proceeded to take further enforcement action against that cease and desist because this process has been underway. I have a concern for the applicant that if there were to be a withdrawal without prejudice and then there's a period of months before a new application's made, there's an exposure, there's a business operating, there's no pending application for a special permit which would legitimize that business. It, it puts the building official on a tough position, it puts the applicant in a tough position.
Not a good idea.
Right.
Not a good idea. Uh, Carol, any thoughts?
Uh, not very much.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Adam. Um, I would just reiterate that, um, it has been a while and it's not just the planning board that's been involved, but our land use coordinator was involved for many months as well as, um, the building inspector. Hours and hours to draft the letters they drafted, calls were made to, everybody was willing to have, to help you get this done and so stated in public meetings. Um, so, back. What is our schedule coming up?
December twelfth. And beyond December twelfth, when work isn't scheduled yet, but typically second and fourth of the month we start.
Okay. Um, may I suggest that we continue the hearing to December twelfth with the expectation that you either have your site plan review, which is something we required at the August meeting, August twenty-second. And if not, you have documents that you can give us, that you are working with someone who was hired to get this done and an estimated time that that will be received. Is that satisfactory? Yes.
Good, I make a suggestion, just so there's no questions from the meeting.
Please.
Request was for either a site plan.
To be completed.
Oh, completed, or some evidence that there is a contract that's been signed, there's work that's underway.
Which is out of her control.
Understood.
Okay.
Um, I presume when you speak about a site plan, what you're expecting, either what you want by that meeting or you want eventually after that meeting if she's working with somebody, is a site plan prepared by a Massachusetts professional engineer licensed to do business in the Commonwealth who will eventually stamp that plan.
Sound moved.
Because I can echo the separate comments that if no one has been engaged yet expecting a plan in four weeks is unlikely to happen.
Oh, uh, may I speak to it? I'm, I'm trying to find a remedy here, but I, I think that, uh, what has to happen is we have to establish a gate for the delivery of this document for the planning board. And if it's not delivered by that gate, then we have to, no alternative but to drive the permit.
Is that accurate, Adam?
I, I think that that is one option. I understood your, your motion to be a little different, which was rather than establish a, uh, drop dead deadline, for lack of a better term, after which there will be a guaranteed trial to require at the next meeting on December twelfth, that either be a plan submitted or evidence that there's progress being made. We're not understanding that if you would then continue it if progress.
I said, okay, it's because now getting up against holidays and winter, and I just think it plays to her favor in being, you know, her operation still continues, um, but I don't see it being feasible. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna put something out there that's not realistic, you know? I don't like what has happened, no one does, no one in town hall does. I don't, I don't, you know, that has had to work on this. But I can't, you know, I, I think we have to be realistic in our expectations and hopefully this will be done in sixty days. But if on December twelfth, we find that she is not ready for that, then we can give one more continuance that's realistic. But we need to know that you are in a contract with a licensed engineer to get this done. But we need to know that you are in a contract with a licensed engineer to get this done. And we know that they exist. There's one in Leinster, they're all over our area. So, um, I'm gonna go with the motion that I started and, well, I didn't, I would like to have that motion stated and that Adam finished with his statement regarding the engineering and the time. He's far more eloquent than I am.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue the hearing to December 12th. And at that time, uh, to have documentation that a certified site civil engineers and all the site requirements have been engaged, qualified professional. And, uh, and I projected time for-
Okay, by the 12th of December. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, um, I'll take a roll call, a vote of that motion.
Carol Moxes, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. On the 12th? I'm doing 7:30. 7:30? All right, and do her 7:30 or 7? 7:40? 6:45?
We have it at 6:45.
All right, 6:45. We have a hearing?
I already have it, yeah.
What do you have at 6:45?
December 12th. Planning what, 6? I had 6, 7 somewhere. I feel like you could-
So you have a meeting in there, but we haven't had a hearing.
Okay. 6:45 on December 12th. Okay, um, so we made that motion. There's nothing else that has to come before this hearing, right? No, no other write-ins or anything that- I'll entertain a motion to continue this meet, this public hearing for 22 Main Street Veterinary Hospital Site Plan Review Special Permit until December 12th at 6:45 PM. Is there some move? And a second? Take a roll call vote? And Laura Schiffern, yes. Continue to December 12th. It's 4:35.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, the suggestion would be, if you want to do that, to, to communicate that prior to the 12th so that the board has some time to review that.
Okay, so I'm checked.
Deliver to Beth and communicate that to the board, please. Okay?
In permission to-
To be looked at. Okay, or, yeah, her email. And then we'll get it to the board. For attending, please. Just pencil all- Do we, is there anything else that we have to do tonight? Is there anything that we have to do tonight? I know. Adam, anything else? Can you- No, I was, there, the-
Yeah. And they here continue with the client, the planning. That's probably a new vibe, although we had a-
It, I mean, since you wanted to help us. So... Sometimes one more. Help. And we think we're helpful on it. It's still like, Adam. Illegal operation and what did, what does that say to others who, rather than following the process, even when they're given the process and we have records of the process? What kind of a message do we send when we allow that? That's a concern.
Yeah, so I want to be careful since the hearing has been continued. So I have talked about-
You're talking about in general, okay?
It's, it's a fair concern. Not really the planning board's concern.
It's an accessory apartment.
Oh.
Not really the board of the planning board to determine.
To be concerned about.
I mean, you can be personally concerned about it, but there is a certain danger if your concern about how, how things are messaged plays a role in your decision-making on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
On applications before you. So it's a fair concern. Applicants should seek permission and not prejudice. They should apply for what they want to do before they do it, not do it in the name of the fact, seek, uh, prejudice from the, from the board and the formal permit. But again, that's, you know, there are reinforcement mechanisms that can be used to prevent that from occurring. Those are not against the planning board, those are against the building official.
Right.
Can I ask for general comment? I, I just want to make that- Many opinions-
No, we'll just do a quick review and give you a comment.
Here.
This is a mandatory review.
Unaware of what is involved before they buy property and before they start improving the project. Of not just this board, like zoning boards and historic districts and all these other, um, regulatory agencies. So I guess what I was, but now it purchase these things with a feasibility to know if not only feasible in terms of regulatory compliance, but feasible in monetary cost.
Oh, yeah, this is for the-
And tha- and that's kind of what I was trying to suggest here. Because I've witnessed myself, a lot of people go through this whole exercise and end up abandoning the project because it's economically, uh, not financially feasible or expend all those funds to be denied. Um, so I don't know how to, so I, I was, before this woman, uh, Dr. Thurber was gonna go down this whole road, I was trying to not upset her, but, uh, make her aware of what's ahead.
Okay, as, as was mentioned, we're not, that hearing is over. And we, we have a, uh, application for our, a referral from the zoning board of appeals in reference to a accessory apartment, right? At 75 Pierce Road. And, uh, they would like to know how we feel about that. And you have that packet, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'd like to hear from the board what you would like to say to the zoning board of appeals. I mean, uh, Robert, while you're looking out, I'll just say that as a housing authority member, this is zoning board of appeals, but as a housing authority, um, member, I, I've always been a proponent of accessory apartments and feel that I think they should be by right, myself. Do you want to have your parents move in or your children move in and, and they can't afford a place today? I, and, and then from my assessor's hat, I would say, more income to the town. So I'm in favor of this. I don't know what recommendation you would like to send.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it being accessory apartments.
Robert?
I, I think that's, in terms of the real situation today, I think I support that as well.
Okay. So the, uh, I'll have a motion to, um, send, I can make, help them make a motion, right?
Sure. For whatever your comment is.
Yeah, and that our comment be that we support the accessory apartment approval for 75 Pierce Road.
All right, and how is that defined?
Is it Pierce Road, this says Turner Road. Is it Pierce Road or Turner Road? I'm sorry.
Pierce Road up top.
Actually Pierce Road. You caught, you caught me on that one, yep. I got the mix check, but the other one was-
The other one was Turner, 77.
And that's actually, it was actually on Madison Ave, so.
Yeah, right, 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 right. Okay.
For the motion, um, I'll make a motion that the planning board supports the applicant for 75 Pierce Road accessory.
Okay, is there a second?
I, can I have some discussion first?
Yeah, sure.
I, I don't, I'm not familiar with the project, so that's what the question is. Is this a freestanding structure?
Single-family home, they're doing an accessory apartment.
Is it attached or attached?
It's attached.
It said it's attached.
Yeah.
I support it to catch.
Okay. Um, hearing no other discussion, I'll, uh, take a roll call vote?
Carol Moxes, yes.
Probably Carrie.
Yes, and Laura Schiffern, yes. Okay, anything else you want us to take care of? We did all the number fours. I know we just have work session, but I'm really overtired and overheated.
Really warming. So there's nothing in work session that's critical? You've all had a chance to review the drafts, right? That I sent to the A.G. district, uh, development. So that's going on the 16th.
And you're gonna be with us on the 16th? Adam?
Question, we'll answer them.
Oh. Yeah, he is, yay. And that's on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:22?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at 8:22.
Should I come in?
Okay. Roll call vote?
Carol Moxes, yes.
I'll adjourn.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Hartley. We are adjourned.